All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am your Lower Paxton Township manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, as is consistent with the Pennsylvania State, the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, all second-class townships around the Commonwealth this evening are meeting to do what is known as the annual reorganization meeting. So this evening, the Board of Supervisors is meeting under that premise. This is a Monday night meeting, and they have a number of items on the agenda, a number of ceremonial items on the agenda, and as well as some business items. First, the Board will gavel into order. You see Mrs. Lindsay here. We've done some back and forth with regard to the placement of our chairs. This evening, the Board will be electing their slate of officers, including Chair, Vice Chair, et cetera, following which a new chair will take office and take the big chair in the middle and conclude with conducting the rest of the meeting, which includes action on appointing a number of other officials, a number of officials to various community boards and commissions, commonly referred to as ABCs. And then following that, the Board will dive into the business agenda of their session tonight, which first begins with the approval of minutes, hearing various comments, then taking action to accept the Mid-Atlantic Automotive Salvage License Renewal. That's an annual action item the Board takes. Following that, the Board then will take action to adopt Resolution 2025-01, which authorizes the disposition of specific records. Then following that, under subdivision of land development, the Board will take action on improvement guarantees. Finally, the payment of township and authority bills. And then finally, hear any last announcements before finally, finally making a motion to adjourn. And with all that said, members of the Board are taking a seat, and we are now prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I'll call the January 6th Board of Supervisors reorganization and business meeting to order. First is the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll ask Mrs. Lindsay to leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first action item this evening is to accept the resignation of Norman C. Zumis from the Board of Supervisors. I have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next action item is to accept the resignation of Norman C. Zumis from the Lower Paxton Township Authority Board. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next action item is to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors and administer the oath of office. Do I have a motion to fill that vacancy?
So moved.
To fill the vacancy with whom?
Alan McCormick.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will ask now Supervisor McCormick to come to the front and have his oath of office administered.
Please raise your right hand. He has to be aye in your name.
Aye.
In solemn, we swear.
In solemn.
For support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as supervisor of Lower Paxton Township with fidelity. Don't help me, God.
Mr. McCormick, you can come on up. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the next action item is a motion to fill a vacancy on the LPT Authority Board. Do I have a motion for an individual to fill that vacancy?
I make a motion. I make a motion for Mr. Timothy Pramick to fill that motion, to fill that position on the Lower Paxton Authority Board.
There's been a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Pramick, if you would like to, oh, you don't have to get sworn in, obviously. Congratulations. We'll move on to the reorganization part of the agenda. We'll start with the election of a Chair of the Board, and then I will hand it over to that elected Chair. I'll open the floor now for nominations for Chair of the Board.
I nominate Robin Lindsay.
I second the nomination.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Ms. Lindsay's nomination? Are there any additional nominations? All those in favor of Ms. Lindsay being reappointed to serve as Chair of the Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Board, for having the confidence in me to serve as Chair for another year. Now we'll have the election of the Vice Chair of the Board. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair of the Board?
I make a motion for Chris Judd.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Election of Secretary of the Board. Do I have a motion?
Nominate Paul Navarro.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Election of Treasurer of the Board. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Pamela Thompson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Election of Assistant Secretary Treasurer.
We nominate Alan McCormick.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the appointment of the Vacancy Board Chairman. Do I have a motion to nominate the Vacancy Board Chairman?
I nominate Daniel Mosel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointment of the Township Manager. Do I have a motion to appoint the Township Manager?
Nominate Bradley Gottschall.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment of Township Solicitor, which would be Batst, Coward, Clements, Zomnar. Appointment of township solicitor, which would be Batst, Coward, Clements, Zamnar. Do I have a motion to appoint the township solicitor?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointment of the township engineer, Herbert, Rowland, and Grubik. Do I have a motion to appoint HRG as the township engineer?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Jason. Okay. Now, I have appointment for the representative and the alternate to COG. Do I have a motion for the delegate to COG?
The representative?
And representative. I say delegate, representative to COG.
I nominate Robin Lindsay for the representative.
Second.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alternate, council, COG is the Capital Area Council of Governments, is what it is.
For the alternate, I nominate Alan McCormick.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the appointment for the voting delegate to Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors Conference.
I nominate Robin Lindsay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The alternate for the PSATs Conference.
I nominate Pam Thompson.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment of the representative for the Dolphin County Tax Collectors Committee.
I nominate, I nominate Sam Miller.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alternate, Chris Judd. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is going to be a little bit boring, but it is the reorganization, and we have to do it the first, the first Monday of the month.
Legally.
Legally. Legally, in the state. Everybody, all the municipalities are meeting, meeting tonight, so. Okay. Arts Council, we have, this is a one-year term, Stanley Smith, Teresa Gonzalez, Jennifer Regina, Shelley Azavario, and we have three vacancies if anybody in the audience is up for being on the Arts Council. So do I have a motion to appoint the four, for a one-year term to Arts Council?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Second.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Audit Committee, that is a one-year term, Chris Judd and Alan McCormick and Sam Miller. Do I have a motion?
For all three?
For all three. Mm-hmm. It's a membership of three with a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Community Engagement Committee, this is a one-year term, Denise Hassar, James Seidler, Stanley Smith, Robert McIntyre, William Minsker, and Tim Murphy. The Community Engagement Committee is made up of residents that volunteer, and they sit on various agencies or boards or commissions that are affiliated with the township. Do I have a motion to appoint the Community Engagement Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Greenway Committee, this is a one-year term, James Seidler, Jennifer Schultz, Michael Emanuel, Albert Banks, Rachel Lawaskowitz, William Miller, and Larry Wasser. Do I have a motion to appoint the Greenway Committee?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Historical Commission, a one-year term, Denise Daimler, David Doyle, Donald Goss, Kristy Kessler, William Minsker, Jay Purdy, Robert Thomas, Pamela Valenzia, Sarah Green. Do I have a motion to appoint, one-year term for the Historical Commission?
So moved.
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lower Paxton Township Authority Board, it's a five-year, they're staggered terms, it's a membership of seven. There is one person up for another five-year term, and that is myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Parks and Recreation Board Bylaws Amendment, there is seven on the Parks and Recreation Board, excuse me, there is nine, and they're having a quorum, having trouble meeting a quorum, so they're asking that we change the bylaws to go from nine to seven. So at this point, I will need a motion on that bylaws amendment change.
I make the motion to change the number of board members on the Parks and Rec Committee from nine to seven.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Parks and Recreation Board, Stanley Smith is up for reappointment of a five-year term. Do I have a motion to appoint Stanley Smith to the Parks and Recreation Board?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The Pension Committee, it's Bradley Gutschall, Sam Miller, and Jada Dunlap. Do I have a motion to appoint the three persons to the Pension Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Planning Commission, four-year term, that is a membership of seven, and we have two commissioners on the Planning Commission that are up for reelection, excuse me, up for reappointment, Everett Hamilton and Sandra Bloom. Do I have a motion to appoint Everett Hamilton and Sandra Bloom to another four-year term on the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Safety Committee, that's a one-year term, it's a membership of 11, Colonial Park Fire Company Chief, Lingustown Fire Company Chief, Paxtonia Fire Company Chief, Emergency Operations Director, Fire Marshal, Colonial Park Fire Company President, Lingustown Fire Company President, Paxtonia Fire Company President, Public Safety Director, South Central EMS Representative, Deputy Chiefs of the Bureau of Fire. Do I have a motion to appoint the membership of 11 for a one-year term to the Public Safety Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shade Tree Commission, it's a five-year term, and unfortunately, we have two vacancies. So again, if anybody is interested in joining the Shade Tree, we do have two vacancies on that board. Zoning and Hearing Board, Gregory Zurb is up for a reappointment of a five-year term. Do I have a motion to appoint Gregory Zurb to the, to the Zoning and Hearing Board?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Establishment of Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer Bonds of $1 million. Do I have a motion to establish the Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer Bonds of $1 million?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Designation of Township Depository, M&amp;T Bank. Do I have a motion to designate Township Depository to M&amp;T Bank?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Establish a Board of Supervisors meeting schedule, the first three Tuesdays except for election days and holidays. Do I have a motion to establish the meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Down to the business, business agenda. Public comment, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any public comment? All I ask is that you give your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Erica Baylor. My address is 1134 Hedger Lane. I'm here to speak about the closing of Coon's Pool.
Okay.
I was the pool manager at Coon's Pool from 2010 to 2023. I retired following the summer of '23, but remained on the Board of Directors and continued to work with the pool staff. I'm also the head coach of the Piranha Swim Team, and Coon's Pool is our home where we practice and hold swim meets. We have a representative here to speak about Piranhas as well, so I'm going to focus on just the overall necessity of a community swimming pool. I have been involved in swimming and swimming pools for my entire life. Community pools are more than just a place to swim, they are a resource for wellness, connection, and positive social experience. This resource is dying. Just in the past few decades, we have lost Rainbow Hills, Wedgewood Hills, Lankor Manor, Pembroke Pool, Latchmere Manor, Northeast Swim Club, and Halifax Swimming Pool. They all have closed, and no new pools have opened. The pool provides a safe space for families, senior citizens, teenagers, and children to exercise, relax, and enjoy safe and structured time. Swimming is a rare activity that is both affordable and accessible for all ages. Studies show that communities with public pools experience lower healthcare costs because residents engage in exercise that benefits hearts, joints, and mental health. Beyond fitness, the pool creates a sense of belonging. It is where neighbors, families, and friends celebrate birthdays, graduations, and other milestones. We have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church groups, daycares, including the Lower Paxton Very Large Summer Day Camp, that all use our pool for summer activities. It is where thousands of children over the years have learned the essential life skill of swimming. Probably many people in this room took Learn to Swim with Edie Weesling at some point. The pool is a safe place where families can gather, socialize, and create memories, building bonds, and social capital that reaches far beyond the summer months. Coon's Pool is unique in many ways, one of which being that it is the only swimming pool in a 20-mile radius where people can come and swim just for the day. Not every family and every person can afford a membership at a private pool. We welcome those people every day with daily admissions, ensuring that everyone can experience a day at the pool. And these people that come for the day don't just come and spend money at Coon's Pool, they stop at Turkey Hill for gas and get ice for their coolers, they stop at Five Below in Dollar General and buy pool floaties and sunscreen, they order pizza from Giovanni's in the Village. The economic benefits of the summer pool traffic reaches far beyond just a daily admission. The pool employs nearly 30 youth every summer, providing a positive first-work experience where kids can begin to see firsthand the necessity of community involvement. Keeping the pool open helps preserve the vitality of community as a whole. Now, more than ever, we need spaces that promote unity and well-being. Closing the pool would not just be the loss of a facility, it would be the loss of connections that it enables. I'm a 15-year veteran teacher in the Harrisburg School District. I have sadly seen firsthand the dangers that closely follow youth and young people that do not have safe, structured places to spend their time. As I previously stated, I have been the pool manager for 14 years. I am well aware of the aging status of the pool. Some things are worth saving, and I believe wholeheartedly that this is one. Despite being a board member, I was not part of the decision or meetings that were made prior to the pool closing. I am well aware that there are things that I don't know, but what I do know is the pool is currently operational and up until last summer was profitable. I know that many people, past employees, service organizations, and other groups have reached out to me with offers of assistance, both financial and physical. I've noticed on Devon Manor's website that Lower Paxton is listed as a community partner, as is the water company. I'm not sure what that entails, but I wonder if those things put into place at Coon's could help stabilize the pool and operations while it's determined if the pool needs larger and more extensive repairs. We started a petition to keep the pool open, we have that here with us tonight. We have over 500 signatures, signifying that our community is largely invested and willing to step up and help to keep the pool in operation. Thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter. As I stated before, there is someone here to speak on benefit of the Piranhas using Coon's Pool, but in the meantime, I just wanted to say that, again, there are many people willing to step in and help, and we welcome any further conversation that any of you might be willing to have with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Serena Merlow. I live at 6531 Red Top Road. I'm actually going to be reading a letter from one of our swim team parents who was unable to be here tonight, but on behalf of her, this is what she wrote. "My name is Melissa Ross Levage, and I've been the president of the Piranha Swim Team for the last three years, but have been a Piranha Swim parent since my son was four years old. He's now 17 years old. I also have a 14-year-old daughter who also started swimming as a Piranha when she was four years old. Neither one really knew how to swim at all before this. Our daughter was a quick learner in the pool, but our son was deaf and had significant special needs, but the Piranha's team was accommodating for him, and he was a team member from day one. He has had a place on the team for all of these years, and everyone at the Summer Swim Network knows who he is and helps cheer him on every single swim meet. This was the only team that truly would take him under their wing and help him grow and be accepted. Maddie wasn't the only child that flourished with this team. The amazing coaches have helped kids with physical, emotional, psychological needs over the years. Everyone is accepted, and inclusion is key. Seeing other swimmers out there cheering on their kids who have different needs is a gift. My daughter was shy and lacked so much confidence, but because of her experience as a Piranha, she is now swimming at CD High School on their varsity team as a freshman. There was a period of time between 2019 and 2020 that we were all afraid that the swim team would fold due to lack of interest and resources. However, a group of us parents got together with the coaches and decided we need to save this team, as there are many people who needed a summer swim team for their kids. We went from having maybe 20 swimmers on our team over the, to over 85 the past two summers. Our team has kicked off our summer season the last two years with a car wash held at Lingustown Fire Company, which was, been an amazing opportunity for us. We also take part in the Memorial Day Parade celebrating our wonderful community in Lingustown. If you happen to pass by Coon's Pool Monday through Thursday evenings in the summer, you would see the lap pool packed with swimmers from ages four to 18, swimming their hearts out for their dedicated coaches. The Piranha Swim Team offers welcoming, a welcoming environment where every level of a swimmer is accepted. There is nothing better than watching a swimmer not be able to swim one lap when they start out to finishing the summer season swimming laps with their friends. On two Friday evenings in the summer, our team now proudly hosts our own dual meets with other local swim teams. Seeing the pool packed by swim team members and their families from our team and the other team is a priceless moment, and these memories become core memories for the swimmers and families. We're so saddened that this decision was made not to open Coon's Pool this year. We had no idea that this decision was being made. As a team, we raised enough money over the last few years to purchase new competition lane lines for the pool, and we had new starting blocks designed and installed at the pool just two years ago. We had them electrically grounded and up to code before the season started. My husband has also spent many volunteer hours over the summer and winter making sure all of the equipment is ready and taken care of in all weather elements. We make sure that all of our families are able to afford their children to swim. We have a big team of swimmers and their families that look forward to having their child be part of the Piranha Swim Team. The team boosts confidence, community inclusion, encouragement, and is a special place to spend summers together in the pool. We have regrown this team over the last few years, and we're very proud of the Piranha Swim Team. We really are hopeful that we can come together and find a way not to have Coon's Pool close, and we are able to continue involving our amazing community members with the entire swim team. I know my son will be devastated when he realizes there may not be a Piranha Swim Team, and my daughter is already devastated and wanting to find a solution as well. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts this evening. Thank you."
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I just want to let you know that our staff is in communication, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you asking?
Can you turn on your mic, please, and you need to talk?
Are you asking for something this evening, or just generally?
Well, we were told...
You're going to need to come up to the mic, please.
The communication that we received from the Executive Board of Directors from Coon's Pool was that the decision to close the pool was made by Lower Paxton Township. And when different people have reached out to the board asking if they could take a seat on the board or help, they were told that the board is no longer in existence. So that's, that's why we're here. The, their lack of transparency, I guess, I would say, we just want to know how we can keep it going.
Okay. I'm going to let Mr. Gutschall handle that.
Okay. Staff is working on it?
Yes, but I'm going to let him respond to the one that, that she said that the township closed the pool.
Yeah, the, I mean, we, since, you know, I don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole, but, you know, since, since early 1990s, the pool has been showing some concern with regard to its financial capacity, largely related to its impending and each-year continued physical degradation, as, as you well are aware. So earlier, I would say probably in the, probably mid portion of last year, 2024 now, the Coon's Pool representatives came to the township, indicating, as they have now for the past couple or few years, that they are in financial difficulties as it relates to a particularly high water bill, as you had noted, from, from a yet unidentified water breach somewhere in the facility. So, you know, they, they came to us to staff to, to, to talk about that and to really lay on us there at that time, interest in wanting to close the pool permanently. And after that meeting, actually during that meeting, I, myself, I was there, Mr. Miller was there, and our Parks and Rec Director, Rachel Scott, was there, and I had mentioned to the, to the pool representative, you know, kind of imploring with them to hold off, kind of cool your jets on, on closing this thing permanently, and let the township... hold off, kind of cool your jets on closing this thing permanently, and let the township work with you, the pool board, to, you know, work through the issue and identify recommendations and kind of put together a plan that would get you guys back on track and make this thing the continued success that it once was. So, long story short, we had that meeting. I got the pool board to close for one year, while the township staff works with the pool board to identify that plan and work through, hopefully, that long-term reopening plan. But, yeah, I mean, the township does not own the pool. We simply own the land and lease it to the pool to operate, so the township in no way was part of the decision to close the pool. In fact, again, I'll reiterate, we actually were the entity to get the pool board to not make a decision on a permanent closure, so, long story short.
Is there any understanding bred of what it would cost to make that pool?
If I may, Supervisor McCormick, this is a 30-year issue, and we're going to have to bring you up to speed on this.
Okay.
There's a lot of information I want you to have.
Thank you.
The board's going to do that, and we're going to make sure that the pool board gets the information as well. This is kind of the beginning of the latest phase in this, but we are going to bring you up to speed on that, so you get all the information you want.
Thank you.
And our staff is going to make sure they talk to the pool board as well.
We have, you'll get this, we have a history of everything, so we're good. Okay.
I have a question with regards to the information that you shared. Do you have that in writing?
What, that they said that?
Yeah, or just a letter that you have, you have your letter in writing?
Like when I spoke?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, were you going to leave a copy of that for us?
Yes.
Okay.
And the petition?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think our question then would be if it was, in fact, a board decision and not a township decision, if a new board would take over, is there any issue with the pool remaining open?
If I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, and I'm pleased to hear that you actually identified yourself as a pool board member, I got that correct, right?
Yes.
Well, we'll certainly be reaching out to you, because I think for many, a good number of years, the pool board has had a, obviously, a very active, dedicated bunch of individuals who have served the pool. I mean, you guys have had, literally, in its founding, people mortgaging their home to build the thing, so certainly, the township certainly appreciates that. We have, I think, run into, given the now kind of deep hole that the board, that the pool finds itself in financially, I think you have now a board that is struggling to find an answer, and they may be, this is just my interpretation, but, you know, they may be tiring of that fight. And I think that's maybe some of the comments you're hearing with regard to them wanting to close it and walk away from it, disband the board, whatever. But I, myself, I'm happy to hear that you're an engaged member that may be interested in discussing that with us, and we certainly, I will be reaching out to you to set up a meeting with you and any other kind of engaged member of the board that you may identify for us to partner with.
And I mean, just respectfully, the other board members, with the exception of myself, are a little bit older, and they've kind of, their energy and their stamina for these things is not as what it once was. The passion is there, but not the actual stamina. But in reviewing our financial records, we're less than $4,000 behind. Last summer, we didn't have the fireworks party, that's a $6,000 revenue right there. So it's not, they're looking at the potential repairs as a huge cost, which it absolutely will be, but we don't even know what that is right now. So I feel like we're kind of throwing out the baby with the bathwater, if that's the expression, something like that. And I feel like if the pool is operational and we have people that want to operate it, and it's a $4,000 conversation right now, I think that's a conversation we can have easily and fix. The Kiwanis Club has reached out to us, different church groups have reached out to us, saying, what can we do, how can we help? And I think with all that interest and that little bit that's needed, I think that something can be done.
Well, and I don't want to get into the background, but I do want to point one thing out in respect to this board. You know, your board comes to us every single year since I've been here, and probably before that, asking for grant money, and we always grant that, and we push that on to Dolphin County. Don't know if you know that, but every single year since I've been here, we have said, oh yeah, absolutely, and we push that on to Dolphin County. I don't know how that ever ends up, unfortunately, we never get to find out how much anybody has given, but, you know, we do support, you know, your organization, you know, in any way that we can, especially in having our staff do that. Yeah.
We get the grant every year.
Yeah.
The gaming grant is specific to a certain item, and you have to know almost a year ahead of time what you need. See, we can't say, hey, we're going to have a big repair down the road, can you help us out? We have to say, we need a new diving board, it's going to be this amount of money, we have this much we can put in, can you help us with that?
Yeah, I think it's been that, it's been that for a couple of years, the diving board, but, yeah, I mean, you know, so I just wanted to point out, I mean, as far as this board, you know, we've, anytime they've come, you guys have come to us, we've supported you in any way, you know, even giving our staff to try and help them, so, you know, thanks for coming.
I'm the new guy, and I don't know anything about this, but I will learn. You said that there's a lot of older people who don't have much energy that are willing
I didn't really mean it like that.
My advice to you, my advice to you is to find some young, energetic members that want to fight as much as you do, so.
Well, and we do, and a couple have reached out, and the existing board said, the board doesn't, we're not a thing anymore. We've disbanded, the township is, and that's why we came tonight, so.
You heard the township manager say, we did not say that.
Okay.
So somebody, there's somewhere, there's.
A disconnect, yeah.
And I've been on this board, I'm starting my 12th year, and we have done a lot of in-kind for, you know, Coons Pool, and yes, I did take lessons from Edie Weasling.
See?
So I'm one of the old ones. But we have done a lot of in-kind, also through our Public Works, our sewer, you know, so we have, we have helped out there. I'm not too sure if you are aware of the history of what this board, the board before that board, what we have done for a long, long time, so. Okay, but thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Bringing it to our attention, and Mr. Gutschall will be reaching out.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak under public comment? Okay, Chairman and Board Member comments. First of all, I want to welcome Supervisor McCormick, welcome Mr. Paramick to the Sewer Board, welcome to the Lower Paxton Township family. We have a guest in the audience tonight, Mackenzie, can you wave? Mackenzie Cover back there is a senior at Central Dolphin High School, and she is here this evening because she has applied for a Pennsylvania State Association Township Supervisor Scholarship. And one of those requirements of that scholarship is to attend a supervisors' meeting, so I thought tonight, we were doing a little bit of everything, I thought it would be a good meeting for her to attend, so welcome, Mackenzie, we really appreciate it. Okay, we did meet in executive session, the board, Mr. McCormick was not with us before the meeting, and we will be meeting as a full board, again, in executive session afterwards. Does anybody have anything else? I do have one more thing, I forgot. We just want to thank our Public Works, Mr. Nolt, and the Public Works guys for coming out during the night, taking care of us all day today, salting during the night, and then also plowing the roads today. So if you could pass that on to Mr. Nolt, they did a great, did a great job, and I hope they were fed. That's always my number-one thing, keep them, keep them fed. Okay, approval of the minutes, oh.
I would like to say thank you to my fellow board members and to the community for this opportunity to serve, and while I need some time to get up to speed, I promise you that I will give my best effort to keep Lower Paxton Township, the great community that I've lived in for 30-some years, and, again, I want to thank you all for your confidence and your voting for me, thank you.
Alrighty. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. I have approval of minutes from October 1st, 2024, Budget Workshop and Business Meeting. Any questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 1st?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gutschall, manager's report.
I have no official report this evening, ma'am.
No, old business, new business. Mid-Atlantic Automotive Recovery Service LLC salvage license renewal. We renew this license every year. Is there any questions from the board member? Any of the boards?
Aman.
Nope, we're good. Okay, do I have a motion to grant Mid-Atlantic Automotive Recovery Service salvage license renewal?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, action to adopt Resolution 2025-01, authorizing the disposition of specific records financed police and community development. Mr. Gutschall?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a rather routine action that the board takes from time to time. As pretty clearly stated in the title, this resolution merely conveys to staff the authority to dispose of certain enumerated here records, as per the requirements of the Act 428 of 1968, which governs municipal and Commonwealth-related records. So I'd be happy to help answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-01?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No subdivision in land development, improvement guarantees. It's a little slow here. We have Nissley Run Development, 1532 Crumbs Mill Road, Amber Fields, Phase 7A, 7B, 8A, Phase 8B, and 8C. Any questions on the improvement guarantees? Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
I'll make a motion to approve the improvement guarantees.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payment of bills, do I have a motion to pay Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority?
Having spent part of the afternoon with Mr. Miller going over the check registers with my various questions, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve payment of the bills.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any announcements, board members? Mr. Miller, Mr. Gutschall?
Aman.
With that said, our next meeting will be next week, January 14th, at 7 o'clock in this room, and that will be a workshop meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.